Been my. We have Commissioner Glenn, Commissioner Mudge and myself. Great. So I think we're ready to get started. So it's 1:04 and we will open this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners in Lake County, Colorado, May 21st, 2020. Today on our agenda, Sarah, if you'd like to type this into the chat, we have a request from the Economic Development Corporation for a donation to their grant program. They've requested $4,500 to fulfill the second round of grants, the approval of the PPE purchase for county facilities, and a discussion and potential decision on St. George's food distribution. So with that, we can move into our first agenda item, which is the EDC request from the county in support of $4,500 towards their grant program. We talked about this a little bit yesterday at our work session and I clarified today with the President of the Economic Development Corporation that we, that the grant program is the second round of the grant program. Originally, the Economic Development Corporation had set aside $30,000 to grant to businesses that applied and met the parameters within the application process. They had money left over from the first grant cycle to roll into a second grant cycle of $500 to distribute to businesses. The $4,500 that they're asking for the county to partner with them in is so that they can give that money to all of the businesses that applied and meet the criteria. And I did meet with John this morning and he did clarify for me that the EDC is requesting from each of those applicants a W-9 with a tax ID number. And they are also requesting them to provide them with proof of the bills that the money would go towards. So, proof of the need. So if we are able to allocate $4,000 to them to distribute that into our local businesses, they would very much appreciate that. That way, all of the businesses that applied will be able to take advantage of that.
Thanks for that additional information, Commissioner Marcel. Appreciate it. And I don't, I don't think I have any other questions.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right. So with that, I feel like we are pretty well in a position to take a vote on allocating $4,500 towards the EDC. And so with that, I will make a motion that we approve an expenditure of $4,500 to the EDC from the Commissioner Other Line item for their grant program to local businesses.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Glenn, do you have further discussion on the topic?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Mudge, do you have any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. With that, no further discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I will connect with the EDC and Crystal to determine the best way to get that to them. Moving on to agenda item number two, the approval of the PPE purchase for county facilities. Amber had sent us a link yesterday with some data on the PPE that she had found for county facilities. Amber, I tried to click on the link that you had sent yesterday and the shopping cart was empty, so I was wondering if you could provide us with a price of the end quantity of the PPE that you had found yesterday?
Hold on, Amber, I'll try to unmute you.
Oh, no, sorry. I was just in an email. Sarah, do you want to update them on the conversation we had this morning?
Yeah. So I spoke with a Clear Creek County Commissioner who had a resource found through CCAT, a similar entity to CCI, and I connected him with Amber. So he had also found a significant stock of KM95 masks that he offered, a source in Denver. I do not believe they were approved by the FDA, he said, but he had gotten them tested at CSU where the state has been testing the supplies that they've been getting or distributing for appropriateness. And he said that they had, they had passed. So he, Clear Creek County is making that large purchase. They're purchasing 15,000 masks. And I do not know if Amber and Commissioner, Commissioner Wheelock were able to connect and do any price point comparisons or resource, you know, the timeliness of the availability. I'm not sure if we could go pick that up immediately in Denver or not. But Amber, do you have, were you able to connect with the Clear Creek County Commissioner?
No, I reached out, but I haven't heard back.
Yeah, he, he was going into meetings, so I apologize for that. But, yeah, so I don't, I don't know, Amber, if you have any more information on the availability. You had said that the sources that you were looking at looked to be available for delivery. Commissioner Wheelock made it sound like, you know, it's still next to impossible to get appropriate masks, although, to be clear, I think, Amber, you were looking at those disposable ones and these are the KM95 that are required should we require and call, you know, provide masks rather than face coverings for employees. And perhaps we want to have both for certain, for certain folks to have the option.
Yeah, so I just put a link in the chat. Again, these are just the three ply disposable face masks so, or face coverings. So I think that sounds like something that, I don't know if Chris is on this call to weigh in, but sounds like it might be more appropriate to have for visitors that need a mask, that don't have one. And we might want to look into a higher quality mask for staff. But these disposable ones do appear to be available right now.
Okay. So I would say, oh, let me make sure that I'm. Okay. I would say that we should go ahead and make a decision on the purchase of these type of masks. And then Amber, if you would just continue to update us as you're able to get in touch with Commissioner Wheelock in Clear Creek County on the other product, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So for logistical purposes, Kaylee and Mabel, if we were to get masks from the Commissioner in Clear Creek, we would need to go through the same process of recording that in our logistics capacity. Is that correct?
Yes, please. Involving Mabel and Crystal to sign off on that as well.
Okay. So I don't know that we necessarily need to make them, just, I'll just make a motion that we approve the purchase of the masks in the link shared by Amber for visitors into the courthouse. And coordination with Clear Creek County Commissioner for higher quality masks for staff.
I'll second that.
Okay. Kayla, do you have any thoughts on how many we might want to purchase? They come in either 50 or a pack of 50 or a case of 100 packs, which is 5,000.
I think we should at least maybe get two cases.
Hold on just a second here, Amber. So that would be 10,000 masks, Sarah?
10.
10,000 masks, because it'd be $4,000 for 10,000 masks. My thought behind that is that I had, I would agree with that. I had spoken to Sheriff Reyes this morning. She's good with purchasing those masks for her deputies. She has also let me know that she has ordered some hoods, some spit hoods for inmates that may need to go to the hospital. So we'll need to coordinate with her getting that information to Mabel and Crystal as well. And then, yeah, I think I would be okay with that. And if we, if we need to, if we find that that's in excess of what we need, we can always talk about sharing that cost burden with the city or sharing our resources with the city. Definitely. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion or conversation around that?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So with that, and no further discussion at this point, all those in favor of purchasing two cases?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Amber, if you will move forward with purchasing those two cases and connect with Mabel and Crystal to get that recorded appropriately through our logistics section, that would be really, really helpful.
Great. I will take care of that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving into number three is a discussion and potential decision on St. George's food distribution. We have Emily Olson here with us today from St. George's and we have Janine McGee also here and Mabel Bogart here. Mabel coordinates our logistics component. Janine coordinates our mass care and feeding through our emergency operations center. Emily, can you talk to us a little bit about the philosophy at St. George's and the need for continued donations to St. George's?
Yeah, so our philosophy at the moment is really around meeting the need as people come to St. George's and providing them with the food they feel their family needs to be healthy right now. So we're really focused on still providing client choice so that individuals can come in and select the food that they, that their family is in need of. Through this model, we distributed about 50,000 pounds of food to feed over 5,000 people in the month of April. And we have, our numbers have stabilized but have not started to decline yet. I will say Food Bank of the Rockies wasn't, our monthly distribution wasn't quite as busy yesterday, but we think that it's because people have been coming to shop the pantry and they know that they can come anytime during the week and select what they want, rather than Food Bank of the Rockies, which is a pre-packed box. And so St. George's is committed to continuing with the client choice model while also meeting our public health requirements to make sure that everyone is safe. And we're really committed to, to giving people that choice. I think it, in the long term, actually significantly reduces food waste and will keep our food costs lower than they would be if we were trying to provide each household with the same exact items. And, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions around participation and kind of what our, what our model looks like. But St. George's philosophy as a whole is really dedicated to building community through food and meeting, you know, providing people with what they have decided they need. And that allows us to both, you know, accommodate dietary concerns and meet really any dietary restrictions that someone might have. But it also, you know, means that people are actively still making choices about what they, they want to consume, which in the long term really helps build community and helps build a relationship with people who are coming to participate.
Thanks, Emily, for that synopsis. I just have a couple of questions for you. How are you measuring the need? How are you? Is it, is it open to anybody or are there actively, is there actively information sharing amongst St. George's and their clients of potential resources at Human Services? And then what is the long, what is the long-term goal of St. George's and the relationship between the county through the pandemic?
So I think in terms of information that we're collecting, the only question that we ask of participants is how many people are in their household so that we know about how many people we are providing food for. And that said, it doesn't, we don't count how often a family visits. St. George's feels very strongly about making the, about encouraging people to come and making it a place where they feel safe and that they feel like they can come and they're not going to be judged or there won't be any questions asked. I think in general, as a county, given that we have one full-service grocery store, anyone who lives in Lake County does live in a food desert. We are rural, but having one grocery store to feed 8,000 people, especially when there are limitations on travel outside of the county, makes it extremely challenging to make sure that there is enough food for everyone in our community. And so both for making sure that individuals always feel welcome when they come to St. George's and that they don't feel judged and that they don't, you know, they feel like it is a place they can, they can come and be safe. St. George's is not, does not have any plans to collect any additional information from participants. And I think in the long term, in terms of our relationship with the county, you know, we have been able to raise an incredible amount of financial support for St. George's and we have been able to build some really great relationships around the state that will start to affect where our food is coming from. But it is still, considering that as an organization, St. George's has never paid to purchase food prior to this crisis. You know, it is a pretty huge financial lift for them. And I think as long as there is, I think it's the state, we have to have a local, our county level declaration of emergency, which means that we can get reimbursed potentially through FEMA. I think as long as that exists, if we are able to, you know, work with the county to help purchase additional food for the pantry to make sure that we can meet people's nutritional needs, especially given that we're the, I mean, we are not the only emergency food option in the community. But I think our, our ability to fee, we are the only one who has the ability to feed the number of people that we're currently feeding. So as long as that state of emergency exists and we can work together to better utilize the FEMA reimbursement around food, we would really like to continue that relationship with the county and with the commissioners. And I think you asked three questions, Kayla, so please let me know if I missed one.
No, I think you, I think you answered my questions. Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Glenn, do you have additional questions for Emily?
I don't know that I have any other additional questions, just comments on, you know, making, kind of trying to create that complimentary consideration between organizations and knowing that, you know, the state has, has stepped up. And I think Janine McGee can step in and help us, the group, understand some of the steps and the programs that have been taken to provide services to folks and food for folks. So I'm really glad that the connection was made between St. George's and Kathy with the state. I apologize. I am spacing her last name at the moment because it does sound like there's a ton of food dedicated and coming into the state. So I'm really glad, Kathy Underhill at CDHS, Janine writes. And so I'm glad that we're getting those resources. I think, you know, moving through this, we really need to make our decisions based on information. And, you know, I think we really need to have that conversation with Ally Lufkin and going through the MOU. And perhaps we need to just have that conversation about the ability to, to be better informed with who and how folks are coming and what the need is there so that we are sure to overlap that with programs and through Human Services to make sure that people, you know, are getting all of the benefits that they would be eligible for.
And not to, not to interrupt you, Sarah, but I think that was the, the other part of your question, Kayla, that you had asked that around connecting participants to other resources. And we are giving out information around SNAP and other food resources. And we are giving it, we've been giving out flyers, I think most of the ones that are available online, sending them both in our delivery boxes, giving them to participants who are coming. So we are trying to connect people to other resources as much as we can.
Emily, do you want to explain what you have been able to work out with Food Bank of the Rockies? I think that's pretty exciting that made so much progress.
Yeah. So thanks to Kathy Underhill, which it was wonderful that Janine, you reconnected us. We used to work together in Denver before I moved up here. She has helped to connect us with Food Bank of the Rockies. So they are actually going to start delivering directly to Leadville twice a month outside of their monthly mobile pantry. And so right now, when we purchase food through them, we have to drive to Denver to pick that food up. And we, starting in June, we won't have to. They will deliver it directly to us twice a month. And it'll be food that we purchase from them because just to, Food Bank of the Rockies is absolutely wonderful and they make, you know, accessing different types of food much easier for a pantry. But there are still items that we do have to purchase. It is not, it isn't, they don't, not everything is free through them. But we are also going to start participating in TFAP, which is food for families with specific economic or specific incomes. And they can access that food. There are certain items they can access once a month and then there'll be items they can access weekly like meat and fresh produce. So we will start having those items, which means we will start collecting a little bit more information for some families because they can only access that food weekly. And then we will also be participating in the USDA program that has been on the news, which are free, pre-packed boxes. It's going to start with produce and just, just produce in the boxes. But within the next month or so, they'll be adding in dairy and meat. And those are free boxes for families to take. So I think between TFAP and the USDA boxes, there is the potential to see a lot more food coming into the county that will lower our costs at St. George's. But I don't think we know yet and we won't know until that food starts arriving, what impact that will have on our ability to purchase food. Because it won't, it won't cover everything that families are in need of, but it, it will definitely impact what we, what we will, what our budget will look like.
And you guys have done some fundraising recently too. You got some Blueprint from Hunger funds. And I know early, since the beginning, you guys have done a really good job of bringing in private and grant.
Yeah, we have raised a little over $50,000. It might actually be closer to 65 now because we just got a second round of funding from the Blueprint to End Hunger, which we are sharing with, with the school district to help, help make sure that they can continue to provide dinner through the summer. And so that round of funding was really exciting. It was about $10,000 less than what we asked for. And we have raised a lot, I will say. We have also spent well over $30,000 in the last eight weeks. And this week alone, we have already spent, after we finish putting in our order for today, it'll be well over $6,000 on food alone. And that, you know, we, we are hoping to continue to raise funds to, to continue to be able to do that. But I, I will say that the, the food purchases that the county has been able to make for us has made a significant difference for us to date, especially because some of those items were items that are, are pretty costly for us to buy. And so I think we were trying to get specifically meat and dairy with the county funds with the hope that it would be reimbursed at least 75% if not 100%.
Thanks, Emily. I feel like I need to gather a little more data before I can make a decision on this today because I feel like, you know, you've brought up some great points about the philosophy and St. George's supplementing the need with restricted travel and resources. And so I feel like I might need some more data as to what the capacity is at Safeway or, or, you know, what that looks like going into the summertime. So I was, I'm wondering if we can put this off for a week so that we can have that conversation around gathering that data locally. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any discussion or any?
Not at this time.
I agree. Commissioner Marcel, I think we need to, you know, given that we're in a different spot of the disaster and the recommendations from staff, we need to look at and have a bigger conversation with Ally Lufkin and/or Susan Fishman included as well to understand, you know, what, what the supply is. Because we, again, you know, we have to be pretty thoughtful, but considering that we're using taxpayer dollars. So I think that if we can be sure that, you know, all of the communications and information is going out and coming in so that we can make those decisions a lot easier, that would be great moving forward.
And we're more than happy to like supply whatever information we have. I know that Craig from Safeway has been a part of our food conversations recently. And so I'm, I'm happy to loop in Ally and Susan as well to whatever, whatever meeting or conversation we need to have so that you guys have all the information you need to make a decision.
Yeah. And Emily, you know, on the, on that, on the reimbursement piece specifically, we only get reimbursed when there's a food shortage or a limit on the movement. And so again, back to kind of where we are in the, in the event right now, we need to make sure that, because, because as far as I understand and what staff, county staff is understanding, we are not in that shortage or that limit on the movement of deliveries or Safeway stock and the, you know, Rock, Food of the Rockies or those kinds of partnerships being able to get food up here. So we So we just need to be thoughtful on all those accounts.
Yeah, no, we totally understand. And if it, if it is that, you know, the opportunity to be reimbursed by FEMA has ended at this point because of the lack of restrictions, then we, you know, we totally understand that. And that's, that's a perfectly acceptable answer, and we will continue to make things work. I think it, you know, it was wonderful that we were highlighted on the state call earlier this week around FEMA. But I also think that call really highlighted that there, there's a lot of opportunity through this program. And I think, given our county's limited resources, that if, if this is something that we can fully take advantage of, that would be, that would be really wonderful. And if it's, the time has passed because there aren't the correct, there aren't the needed restrictions in place anymore, then, then that is, that's totally fine as well.
Awesome. Thanks for the productive conversation today, Emily. So would you mind if we bring you back next Thursday once we've had an opportunity internally to gather some of this information from our logistics and mass care functions?
Yeah, that is totally fine. And I'm happy to, if you, you know, need to have any conversations in the meantime to collect that data, that is fine, and I'm happy to ask Ally and Susan to join us as well next week.
That, I think that would be great. So if you could ask them if they can join us next Thursday, that'd be great. And so if you guys can bring some of your data, and we'll bring some of our, our data through that FEMA reimbursement process. And then we can just have that discussion next Thursday. I think that would be really, really productive.
Yeah.
Cool, thanks, Emily. Commissioner Glenn, Commissioner Mudge, do you have anything further at this point?
No, I don't.
I do not.
All right, so Emily, we will see you next, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I keep forgetting to make a general announcement, not on the food or any agenda items. We, the Planning Commission is looking for members. So please spread that opportunity far and wide. And anyone that lives in the county can submit a letter of interest to the Building and Land Use Department or the Board for consideration.
Well, so just so that we're all on the same page, moving forward, our contribution to St. George's at this point has ended. And so I think before we move forward with another order, we should wait until we have that conversation next Thursday. Are you good with that, Commissioner Glenn?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Emily, thank you so much for your time today and for joining us and for the productive conversation and information. And Janine and Mabel, thanks for also being here to, to help us. And so with that, is there any further conversation or discussion amongst my fellow board members? No?
Nope.
No.
All right, great. So with, with no further conversation or discussion, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 1:38. Thank you all for being here, and we will see you next week.